He's working on. And what I really need from folks is how? How much do you want in regulation? I mean, does everything? I'm sure Chris will go through the checklist of. To be sure I have everything lined out that we need to do. And the forms are pretty easy. To get from other places. But the big thing is like, do you want hours in the cemetery? Do you want? A place set aside for cremations that separate from the burials? Like if there's enough space to do that? Do you want dogs and pets and cats and traffic up there? You know, there's just a lot of little picky things. That I didn't know how much the council would want put in there. Once we get an ordinance drafted. Or reviewed by Chris and then I finish up. Getting the the forms, there's one form I'm missing, I haven't been able to get. So thoughts?
Um. Go ahead, my man.
I think things that we would need to enforce. We probably don't want to do and hours is one of those things.
Yeah, I'm 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 fine without having hours per se. The only issue I could see up there, we might want to address is like the at large kind of camping. That people do up there, you know, because people do go up there and park and camp in vans and RVs. And I don't know if we want to address that part of it, but as far as like the hours of it. Doesn't really. Doesn't really bother me to have it just open. I mean, and then as far as traffic, same thing, like with dogs and cats and stuff like, I mean, I don't know who would have a cat on a leash up there, but. But, uh. You know, it is a tourist spot, you know, so it is fun, you know. I think traffic is fine up there. Um, but camping is the only part that I was thinking of when you have the things you were just listing, listing, Anna, Anne.
I didn't realize people.
I agree with that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, John. Yeah, I didn't realize people camped up there. So I think that's a really good point. And then. Any other suggestions as to things you do or don't want? Done up there? And then I'll move to kind of the timeline about what? I'd like to see happen.
Me, excuse my ignorance here, but like, what does a cremation lot look like compared to a? A normal lot, is it just smaller plaques and things like that? Or or is it, does it allow for more density or? I've never been in a cremation lot before.
So my, so Antonio's family has a cremation area at the cemetery in Flagstaff. And it simply is one concrete. Wall per se. With room for a drawer to store ashes and a plaque on. So so they're like little mailboxes.
Yeah.
For lack of a better term, so yes, it does allow for more density, doesn't, you know, doesn't require. The extra land. Um. So, so. I think I think that's a nice way to. To do things, you know, I mean, especially when we have people who just simply want a headstone and plaque in the cemetery and the body, body is someplace else. I think if we have someplace to offer that. That's a nice thing.
Awesome.
I know there are some up there that are cremation lots, but they just bought a plot.
A full lot, a full plot, yeah.
And then they can put whatever they want on that, so they were buried there. So far, there's plenty of room. But you don't know.
Maybe it's just a nice option to have for both things, you know, if somebody doesn't want to buy the whole plot, doesn't need the whole plot. We can offer them something else for cheaper, you know, if they still want to buy a whole plot and don't want to put anybody in the plot, then I guess, you know, I mean, I guess that's fine, but.
And I haven't seen any of those, but I'm sort of picturing kind of an artistic. Structure that would be kind of dedicated to. Cremation spots, but.
Yeah.
Some overlooking the edge or whatever.
Ian is saying that she is having some issues with us freezing.
Yeah, I miss, I'm missing quite a bit. And so I'll go back and listen to the recording. But and make sure I pick up everything and I know Aaron's. Also taking some notes, but. In terms of. Letting me put together kind of a packet of what forms I I've been able to pull out. And asking Chris to review the ordinance, do you all feel like? We're good enough to go on that and then? We'll need to have a board and we'll have to advertise for that. And I think that kind of fits into that later discussion of how? How many people do we feel should be on a board? Obviously, the easy first part is advertising and seeing if we get anybody that's interested. But in terms of, go ahead.
I'm just. Have you sent us the the ordinance or did you just want to send it to? To Chris and then to the task, because I do not have that in the packet or in any of my mail.
And I apologize if I didn't get it to everyone, I thought that I did, but if I didn't.
What what I have from you is the, you know, when the grant came through and we were talking about surveying it and that kind of thing, but. But anyway, no, I have I have not seen that at all, I've seen some samples of them. I think the simpler, the better, as far as rules, a lot of them have rules of what you can put where and whatnot, and. I think that kind of goes with the town's character of letting people do what they want on their own little. Spot, I think we need to put dark sky stuff in there. Because that is something that people do a lot of is lighting at cemeteries.
And my apologies, it does look like what, uh, Ian had said this to Chris and I, and I did not get it in the packet, so I'm going to drop it into these. Agenda packet, it should be there now. And it should be under. Not making sure it's good.
Yeah.
For clarification, while you guys are working on that, is this an ordinance or a resolution?
Um.
It says ordinance.
Yeah, is this an ordinance or a resolution, uh, Anne?
Those are ordinance, that's an ordinance, it's, um, cemetery is an ordinance because of the law, it's not a, just a policy.
Okay.
And I I would agree, Lou, I tried, when I was looking at this, I. There were things in other cemeteries where it tells you the way the marker has to sit and what can go on the grave and the entry areas and fencing and grass, you know, grass, good luck with that. You know, those kinds of things, and so I was trying to really pare it down to. Keep it with the. With what we have. I mean, I don't hear people complaining in town about the cemetery or how it's used or how? How it looks, and so I tried to just keep the same. Kind of boundaries that we have now. In terms of how it looks.
I have one question about the land itself. The land is still held by Southwest Heritage Foundation, is that correct?
Yes.
What does that process look like in terms of a timeline and, you know, what needs to be done to work with that organization to take it under the town?
So my thought would be send every, send what? The draft ordinance to Chris is tell him to take a look at it along with the forms. And then set up a meeting with Southwest Heritage to talk to them because. I envision, I I touched base with Chris a little about it. There will need to be several types. There will need to be several conveyances of deeds. Because the county. Has tried to create a cemetery district, we probably need a quick claim deed from them, we need something from Southwest Heritage. Need to see exactly what might overlap where people have been buried on other properties. And so it's really getting a handle on. Where the burials are and then looking at what those properties are. But I'll, I think moving it along so that by the time we get the survey. And the digitalization done, we've also got the. The deeds done.
Do we need to have until the time that the deeds are conveyed? Do we need to have any kind of like written agreement with Southwest Heritage Fund? Or Southwest Heritage Foundation to ensure that like we're able to be up on that property?
I would say not, but we can certainly do that.
Is the primary point of contact right now for that organization?
I've been talking with Bill Davis. And someone else whose name escapes me because I don't have it with me.
Is there a county? Cemetery ordinance? And was the, and is that what they've been following or have they, or has it just been? Shoot from the hip?
It's been totally a hundred percent shoot from the hip and bluff. Um, Monticello owns and runs their own cemetery, as does Blandy. What happened when? The commission at the time created the Bluff Cemetery District. They created it over what is? Pretty close to being the Bluff Service Area Lines. And then, of course, didn't formalize it. So they didn't adopt bylaws, they didn't adopt policies, they they didn't do anything. Um. So it's really, the way I've approached it, and I hope it's the correct way, is that? We're just starting fresh with what we've got, it's like somebody just handed it to us. We create it. And pick up what where they left off. And then that gets to, you know, that the other point that's just very practical. Do we try to retroactively clean up? All the non filings? Or do we start fresh and then at some point work backward? But nothing has been filed and recorded since the burials started going in up there. And when I say. Nothing, I mean, literally nothing, you're supposed to record. Do those forms, like giving the certificate of burial, going to the recorder's office when the person has died, because it's not just enough to get the death certificate, we've got to get death certificates. As people pass. And then record all that with the state and with the county recorder's office. And according to the state cemetery. Division. Nothing has been recorded on the hill at all. So. That's kind of how I how I've approached it, right or wrong?
I have a couple of comments. Six point seven point nine oh is burial hours. I I think that just needs changed to dawn to dusk. I know we have one at seven thirty in the morning. And a lot of times you avoid the heat and the sunshine and so on. Um, and I don't see why it would bother the town to have it in the evening, say. I don't, I just think if you put dawn to dusk. And also in C, it talks about how quickly you bury. If you're not doing. That word escapes me, the. The body preservation stuff, the chemicals embalming, thank you. Uh, if you're, if you're not doing embalming, um, you're limited by time. So I, I'm not sure that we need that much time, that much notice.
Just gonna share so we're all on the. It'll be on the same page, what section were you looking at?
Six point seven point nine oh, they're both at the same.
Yeah, I agree with both of those. Yeah, I'm right there, they've never, it's never been a problem, you know, for people, and then they normally seems like they do the digging and stuff the day before sometimes and stuff.
That would be like.
Yeah, that's never been a. Problem.
In that same line, in that same line, I don't know why we would limit it to holidays either.
Yeah.
Which is right up above that one. Thanks for posting that, Erin, because I couldn't look at it.
Yeah, no problem, um, here, I'll try to make it just a little bigger as well, so. Suggestion to strike this piece, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yep.
Yeah, maybe the whole entire.
Somebody dies at Christmas, then bury him at Christmas.
Yeah, I mean.
And and just so you know, I am totally fine with any changes people want to make because I've never had to do this before. And I just was working off of.
Boilerplate.
Yeah, boilerplate of other places and trying to piece it together, so. The other thing, go ahead.
Well, they work around employees and, you know, that sort of thing in there. Oh, yeah, but no, that's fine, that's why you do this, so we can all. And take a crack at it.
The second, so sorry, I was pulling up the document, as you were saying, so we had the the hours dawn to dusk, and then what was the other section?
Well, it's it's that whole section point nine oh, I don't think there's anything in there that we need to keep.
Or like just break it down to dawn to dusk?
Well, we don't worry about holidays and B is all other days and hours of dawn to dusk, I may, if somebody wants to bury. Dark and the mortuary is willing to, I don't know. I don't know that we need to put that in at all. And then have to arrange it forty eight hours in advance, I mean, that's just kind of deal with the. Mortuary and whoever's. Coming, I I think we could probably strike that whole section.
The only way way that the forty eight hours could come in handy is if we, if we are the ones who are expected to dig the hole or something like that. We might need the time to track down. A backhoe.
Well.
Or someone to dig it.
Yeah, up above is that one, section six point seven point eight oh. Arrangements must be made with the cemetery sexton by the funeral director, the relative of the person having charges of deceased. The town of what will be responsible for the opening of the grave and burial and closing of the grave after the services. And so that's why I say like, if that's in there, so then they have to reach out to the town and then the town says, well, it's available this day or that day or. Well, maybe just add up there. Allow forty eight hours. Advance the time set because I give you a date to open it and a day for, a day before the funeral to open it. Yeah, so if you just put C up there. Let's see up there. Let's see. Let me just highlight this. Well, and then the the part that says no private contractors are allowed to open and close graves, because we can't do it ourselves, we have the highest type of contract. So maybe X, Y, or Z.
Yeah, yep.
I mean, you can't just go up there and. Dig your own grave. With the chain in the way, I mean, some people do like to do it by hand.
It's rough.
Well, actually, one reason that's in there is because that has been Hall and the Rocks experience, they just. Find out somebody went up and buried someone.
Oh. Hmm.
Yeah, I like, but like if they have to let the sexton know or the town know. That there is going to be burial. Then that would. Hopefully keep anybody from being. Anonymously or randomly buried.
Yeah, that just covers a whole of those kind of issues, I think.
Yeah, I do agree, like the private contractor, because. Where we are, who knows who could come dig a hole sometimes and stuff.
Oh, we're not set up. We, I think it's, it's the town's approval.
Exactly.
Channel's turning.
So so back to that whole thing, but it's the town of what will be responsible for the opening of the grave. I guess that's okay. We're responsible for it.
I feel like responsible for scheduling. Well, I feel like if you're going to be paying fees to, I mean, ah, this is where it gets kind of tricky, but. It does seem as though if you're paying, and maybe it is, maybe you are just truly paying paying for the plot. But if you are not paying for the grave to be opened or closed. Then we would want to evaluate our fee schedule on what is isn't included in the cost of the purchase of a plot.
And I think it would be the, if I understand it right, it would be the approving and like the bureaucracy part of it, like the filing and all that stuff that that the board would do, just not the physical.
But it's all.
The grave.
Well, but I wonder too, I mean, if we are. If we're just. You know, how do we manage this in terms of it's so specific as to where the digging needs to be done? I do kind of want the town monitoring who that is, and it can't just be any, anyone. Either it's we have a private contractor that we prefer that they go through. Because I don't, I mean, of all the things that you're going to be excavating, it feels like these are pretty close together and probably pretty sensitive areas that we don't want just any Joe Schmo going up there with its heavy equipment. And digging.
Yeah, like, in that part of most burial packages, it's like if you've got a service going, they offer it, I mean, and then, I mean. I mean, I've never, like, let's say, all the churches I've ever been to, the church didn't have a backhoe that went out and did it, like the funeral service. They were responsible, like, just how they're responsible for putting their vault and all the other things.
But there are those.
No. I don't think that is the case very often in in Bluff Brit, you know, I mean, especially with the Navajo funerals that I've been to and things like that. When they're coming out of a mortuary out of Shiprock, they do not bring a backhoe down with them. Um, I think those people are often trying to find their own backhoe service. The way that I would like to see this is expressed is that the town of Bluff must approve for the opening of a grave, uh, must approve the opening of a grave. That way, we can offer them a list of preferred contractors. That we know of, if they want to hand dig it, fine, if they don't, you know, I mean, I I think that gets us off the hook, and we don't necessarily have to do it. But we have to approve where it is.
And just. The reason we haven't had this problem is because it's another thing that volunteer Bluff, we just help each other and people don't charge for that. Marx has done, Galen's done a bunch, Melvin did a bunch, you know. They didn't charge for that one, somebody lost someone, that was their role as they went up and dug the grave.
Well, and I've seen them hunt, hand dug before too.
It what?
I've seen people hand dig them before too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And then, but but we've also run into a couple of problems with some, uh, get opened. Too far, too deep, too big, you know, wrong place, that kind of thing, so that's why I think the town needs to oversee and approve the backhoe, approve the.
Or monitor it when it's happening, like, it's not going to stand there.
To to know that that our cemetery sexton, I guess, which Paul is there on site during the opening of the grave and. We can't just bust up there and you're on.
I think we might have lost, oh, no, Anne's still on. I think she might have had to reach out. Okay. All right, so definitely we need to just evaluate, make clear exactly who's responsible. Clarify like the communication channels, even if the town of Bluff is not responsible for opening or closing. But ensure that we have the expectations for timing, communication, who to communicate to.
And they're on scene.
Yeah.
Bluff will be on scene or something like that, must be on scene or something like that.
Okay. Got that from there. Rich?
Okay, so are we done with that one? I guess, okay, then I also have a comment on six point seven point one two oh. It says it has to be metal stone or cement. It says they all shall be identified by a marker or monument, and I think. That's not necessarily necessary either. You don't have to have one, maybe somebody wants to do something in wood or some other. Or. Or not, yeah, just peacefully, you're buried here and plant a bush or something.
I don't know this for a fact, so I'm just throwing out, my guess is that the state requires that there be some kind of marker. I don't think it's going to dictate. What the material is, but definitely being able to identify it, but that's something if we can just make a note of, I'll clarify with the cemetery, um, division.
And then, uh, the other one to to check is this no more than one monument or marker, a lot of times the veterans will have a family marker and. Military. One on the same spot. Oh, it says, where a traditional military marker is appropriate in addition to another monument, okay, there you go.
See, you're right on it, though, you knew exactly what's up.
Um. I have a question about in six point seven point five, page three. Down at.
Six point seven point.
I'm going to add page numbers for this one, so.
It can't be point five, six point seven, mine ends at.
Section six, section six point seven point five oh, point cemetery general provisions, page three.
I don't think I have that. Oh, wait. We're just gonna, we're sorry. Sorry.
No worries. So then down at E. So on page four technically. Plot improvements. No improvements, changes or modifications shall be made on any plot by any person, including the certificate holder, his or her heirs.
Yeah, what does that mean?
That just seems. I don't get that, I don't get, it just seems super broad, so I'm trying to figure out.
But what does it mean, like, what's the intent of that?
That's right, yeah, it wasn't improvement, like. Because I see there's a definition for plot, but not plot improvements.
What's the definition of plot? Or their definition. You mean, the designated parcel is five feet wide by ten feet long within the town cemetery for containing.
And you're giving.
I think the. I think the plot. Size. Needs to be adjusted because I don't think that's the actual size of the ones on the the map. And I have to look at that, so if we could just flag that. And you're right, I have no idea what improvements mean, I'm just picturing. Yeah, ask, I'll ask Chris to take a look at that language.
Yeah, just given like the the heritage background of the whole site. I don't know, just. Don't want to prevent errors from coming in and doing a minor improvement. Like a beautification thing or something like that, like.
Yeah, I don't know what that, I mean, because like you should be able to bring in a new stone or like they like to extend things up around it or.
Better improvement. Clean the stones, that improvement.
Yeah, and then. The size, I suppose, is. And lights, I think we need to have somewhere in there. Something that says that it. It's not a beacon or whatever, that it flies with our dark sky ordinance.
No eternal flame.
Yeah, because there, I mean, a lot of cemeteries have a lot of lights going on. And I wonder if the improvements may be, if, you know, from other cemeteries is maybe. Joining two together or, I don't know.
Would you answer a question, we can have two people making comments of the document at the same time?
I'm also curious about the double stacking of people. Something they do in Europe. I don't know if that's a state code.
What page is it?
Oh. Terminal out in one grave, doubled up burial should not be permitted, it's section six point seven point one hundred.
I'm not sure if they, are they required to have vaults here?
No.
No, okay.
And we shouldn't require vaults.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just asking, faults are disgusting to me, but I'm saying you can't, you can't double stack two vaults, they're huge. The state requires a vault.
No. I don't, there is one vault that they can remember.
I've actually only ever done. Natural burials here, where you don't, are not required to have anything. Because you're not fully the ball.
Right, which that's, but you have a limited time for that. It's like, I think it's maybe three days, um, but it's not too long.
I would be okay if we removed C. I'm, I mean. I mean, that's kind of up to the people who buy them. Guess we don't maybe want 10 people buried in one. I don't know.
Well, it says double, so they're assuming no more than two.
Oh, it does say two. Sorry, I missed that one.
The, the cremation plots um, is also kind of where cremation burial shall not be allowed when the frost level is greater than four inches. I guess they just wait till it's opened up. So maybe that's the idea. Oh, there's one, no monument or marker on grave. So in um, that same section, six point seven point one two O on grave markers and memorials down on. C, it says that you have to put something there within 90 days and that's kind of restrictive to. By the place that we live and the delivery of those things and picking them out and getting them built and.
Even in, even in crowded places, you can be like almost a year out.
Couple of years, I'd say within. Two years or five years or something.
Well, with, with, with that, wouldn't that, you know, I mean, if you have to have a marker there, couldn't that consist of the little? Metal stand, you know, I mean, that's offered there, often placed there before a grave, you know, if, if somebody decides to put a grave marker there.
Yep, and that's what usually the um. Mortuary usually has something that. And then I don't, also don't like D, um, because it, it also is infringing on people, I believe. The right to plant shrubs, flowers, or other semi-permanent memorial items. I guess you get the approval of the section.
I think the issue is that if folks are planting larger things that are going to encroach on other plots. It inhibits our ability to manage the other plots. So that you know, yeah.
Right. If you bury a tree on somebody and all of a sudden it's going into somebody else's plot and you have to take the tree out to bury somebody else, that could upset the person that you're.
Both sides, yeah.
Which probably goes into this idea as well of improvement of the plot and how it impacts the plots adjacent to it.
And what about this animals and cemetery? We have a lot of us walk dogs through there. Is that a problem?
I don't think it's a problem. People walk their dogs up there all the time.
It's listed in, let's see, six point seven point one three O conduct and access. Talks about who can drive where and whatnot. Horses, dogs, and other types of livestock. I'd say maybe keep the horses part in. Unless they're on the roads, which if they're out on the roads, they're not really in the cemetery. Horses and livestock are not permitted on the cemetery grounds. And what does it mean? All disinterrments shall be of the casket only. What does that mean?
Oh, body parts hanging outside of the casket.
Well, no, I wonder if it means you can't take the dirt.
Oh.
I wonder if it means you can't take the marker. Like, what does that mean? Why is that there? Weird, but maybe some people want. That be there. I know, it's taking the casket, but you know, it just sounds funny, but it's, I suppose it means the. Like, why would you care if they took the marker if they're taking the body? I don't know. I think we need to find out if we want that in there.
And then on uh, up above on six point seven point one two. Uh, grave markers and memorials down at C. We already struck this, but it says, kind of go along with the, the, the real marker. Um, said at the end, it says no grave or in C, it says no grave will be dug without proof of monument purchase.
Right.
And I mean, that just same thing. You got like, it just seems like a very, that seems like a harsh burden.
Yeah, you're dealing with all the cemetery arrangements, which, I think these are, they're in that order maybe.
See what.
What's that? They just seem a little like the ABCs or the. Okay, it's once we get. I usually don't do anything with numbers until we're closer because there's so much change that we do, but I will definitely, that's always on my last thing of like page numbers and, you know, the numbering and.
But which one was it?
Um, six point seven point one two zero C, which is on page six. Uh, value it's taken for this requirement. Let's say compared to other.
Yeah, I think you got that.
The same for, same for B. I'm a little confused on what limitation for a one foot, about one foot, like.
Well, that would be if we have a separate little area that's all cremation, that's how big we would want it.
Then I don't even think that's saying separate area. I think that's implying under, because it's just under great markers, memorials, not in the section specifically for cremation. So I'm thinking they're saying that that's the limit.
And we don't sell any of those that are for sale at this point.
But if you're cremated and dumped in a full, in a full thing, now it's a cremation lot. So even if you bought a full burial lot. And that's how I would read it if I was trying to follow this code, is I would say grave marker memorial. Like say, like I want to be cremated and I might want to lie. If we don't sell them, I still want to be cremated. And if I want to be interred there. And do I just get it one by one? It just seems really small, like, because I'm saying, and it's kind of like relevant to me. If you want to put a headstone up, put a headstone up. But if you've got problems with say being involved, but also have problems with getting in the ground in 48 hours.
In the cremation plots, it says so, says two by two. I don't see the one by one.
It's in six point seven point two uh, grave markers.
B.
This seems a little weird to me. I mean, I guess I would probably strike the whole thing.
Oh, so that's the monument inside the area. So the, the area is two by two and your thing can only be one by one. So you have. What do you call it? Setbacks around your.
Base.
Oh, yeah, but what I'm saying is like, if you're, if you say, we don't have a cremation spot, we're just selling regular lots, then you're cremated. Then this is what they're saying to do with cremated remains, for a monument for cremated remains. So it goes to one by one.
I guess it's just that I. But the lot, the size of it will be two by two. If we set a separate thing aside to say, okay, here's all the cremation ones that not, they're not as expensive or whatever there. And they're two by two, but your marker can only be one by one.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We don't set aside a cremation one and people are still.
Oh, then you can do whatever you want.
Well, that's, but not as it's written right now. That's what I'm saying.
Because.
Because it says cremation monument size and it's telling you exactly how you can do a monument if you're in a cremated hole.
Except it says inside the area set aside for cremation barriers.
Uh, you're right.
So if it's just not a regular plot, then you do, you conform with a regular plot.
Gotcha. Sweet.
It could be that.
This is just, this is just hard reading it for first, you know what I mean? Reading it while we're discussing it.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, I'm sorry. It wasn't in there.
No, no, no. That's not, that's not to you, just. Not to my own.
Pretty clear there that we should have had one and I should have asked you for it.
Anybody else see anything? No.
And when we get it surveyed, then those roads up there will be more clear. You know, nobody really drives on the roads within the cemetery. Right now. Those will be more clear. But they don't necessarily need open, but that's where they use, they use those roads to get into a grave site.
Um, are we feeling comfortable to move on to talk about timeline for the cemetery board? Sweet. Anne, uh, do you want to get us going talking about that?
So are we moving to two?
Yeah, just uh, the timeline for the cemetery board.
Yeah. So I would say, okay, since I am out of office in January. And this is something that I don't want to leave.
Breaking up a little bit, Anne. You want to test Anne?
I think we lost her.
Yeah, I think we lost her too.
Us to be pretty close to finalizing.
You're just back in, we lost.
We lost you for most of that, Anne. Sorry. Can we try it again?
I can try. Um, so I would say let's, I'm aiming for no later than mid. November to be able to wrap this up. Which means once we decide who we're hiring for the digitalization. And I will start working on the other pieces of getting this to Chris and lighting a fire under Chris to get this reviewed. And looking at the forms. So the goal, the, the end result would be mid-November for me.
So do you want a board in place to help review the, this ordinance or just once it's in place then to be able to carry on?
I would say to carry on. I think it's problematic to appoint the board because then I feel like we're doing just what San Juan County did. We appoint a board and then it falls apart. I think the council needs to. To determine the ordinance, the forms. Get everything ready to go and then appoint a board to begin deciding if they want to work backward or forward or both. And then based on that, getting them to, you know, work on. How we implement this going forward.
Yeah, and I think having the ordinances, ordinance and forms will help uh, let people know what they're getting into on board. A little bit better.
Well, and that's exactly it. There's some training that they'll, they'll need to do about being on a board and. That's what didn't happen last time. People didn't take the training and the, the boards weren't reappointed or re-advertised and, and folks did a great job of keeping it going. But that's why when there's none of that in place and you appoint a board that has to take actual accountability with the financials. Cause we've got a bank account that's sitting out there, you know, in the name of person that, it's a personal account. It's not a, a county account.
Awesome. Does anybody else have anything on this topic? We moved to number two.
Thanks for your work on it, Anne. We appreciate it.
All right, sweet. Moving on to number two, review of draft of ordinance adopting residential agriculture, farm animal and domestic animal regulations.
Which draft do you want me to pull up first? I was thinking probably the one that is entitled. Anne's, the Anne K. Leffinon draft dog cat ordinance. Or I guess that's the next one, sorry. So I just wasn't sure. We've got. I guess I'll call it the one that three point O.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me add just two sentences to this. If everyone remembers planning and zoning did a very. A, a much more comprehensive residential agricultural, agriculture, farm animal and domestic animal regulations and the. Cat and dogs were in the same ordinance and there was a discussion that Lou had where she thought everything should be one ordinance. And. So for the ease of discussion, I pulled out from that, the cat dog piece that I think is real.
So we're making our tools here. Leave all these folks in here. Okay. I don't know what it should. It should be the one that's three point O. Oh gosh, okay.
I don't know if I'm trying to do a review, but it's.
Oh, click um, you X out of your computer audio thing. Go down to kind of the middle of the screen to the right. And just click the X out of that. Yep. Yeah, okay. And then you can minimize the view of how many screens you're seeing. On the right, you should be able to choose, yeah, choose what's interesting. That should, that should make it a little bit bigger. Okay. All right, all right. Tell me where you guys want to go.
Yeah, Anne, who's Anne's notes on this?
Yeah, I believe these are Anne's candid notes.
I know that I'm, I'm cutting out and I'm having a lot of uh, connection issues. So the only thing I'm going to say about this is. From me personally, I would skip over doing anything with any other animals and focus on the dog. And dangerous dog, loose dog area and not spend any energy on these other pieces, but that's just me. I'm going to remain muted though, because I'm really just freezing every time I unmute.
There, paper copy.
I think I'm good.
Yeah, this went a lot into like animal welfare.
Yeah. The other one's more dog.
If we're not ready for it, I would say. If we're not ready for it, I would say. Yeah, get the one done first every time at the end, back to it.
And we wanna do, okay. So what's the deal with the, and this, so what's the deal with the, the AKL?
That's, so that would be the one that Anne drafted.
Okay.
Um, so there's also a draft in there that has. It's probably, or maybe I didn't even include that, cause there was one that I had had where it was like the fees and licensing and everything.
Yeah, and I didn't see that.
Yeah, I don't think that's in there. I can work again, kind of carry it down G.
Okay. All right, sweet. So is everybody comfortable moving on to number three then and talk about the. Dogs and cats. Good. All right, sweet. So we'll move to number three, review of draft of an ordinance adopting regulations for dogs and cats. And that's four point O.
Yeah, and sorry, my numbers were off. I did not go update them after the final. Drafted, uh, or final draft, which I don't know. Let me share my screen again. That should be back up again. Of course. Okay.
So I guess the first thing I have a question about is just some clarity on potentially dangerous dog. Just cause it says it starts off with A inflicts bites on a human or domestic animal. Either public or private property. I mean, doesn't that immediately put it into the dangerous dog and not potentially? It's, it's already acted. I'm just a little confusion between dangerous dog and, because if you go up to B, dangerous dog, it says inflicts severe injury on a human being without provocation. Kills a domestic, you know what I mean? And to me, I think a dog is dangerous as soon as it bites a human, period. Especially a stranger.
I'll try to answer that. Um. So if you know that the difference between potentially and a dangerous is dangerous is defined after notice to the owner. So you have to give notice and that's before you can declare it a dangerous dog. So potentially dangerous, first bite allows somebody to, to act on it. But to go through all the steps that you might wanna do, we've gotta declare it, uh, a dangerous dog. And that's where Chris is gonna have to come in and, and piece all that together. But I think that's the distinction. Almost every ordinance I looked at had potentially and then dangerous. But the description of the behavior is basically the same.
Okay.
But it. I, I see where a dangerous dog has its thing and you have to give them notice of it. And I, like the San Juan County, you have, we have two, or it's having ours, two owners. Two different people have to say that this is a dangerous dog or whatever, but a potentially dangerous dog are the ones that charge the fences. And charge into their leash that you, you know, made at the playground or whatever. But hasn't bitten anybody yet. Except that one says potentially inflicts bites on a human. So they're saying if it bites a dog, a potentially dangerous one inflicts bites. So it's not dangerous just because it bites.
No, I, and this is where Chris is gonna need to clarify it. I think when you call, when you label a dog dangerous, you have to have given notice versus a potentially dangerous. I'm not positive of that, but that's what I could glean from looking at stuff. Again, this is why Chris will need to look at it. But I didn't wanna send anything to him until we're all on the same page that we're not doing a huge animal ordinance or we are doing a huge animal ordinance.
Me, yeah. I'm fine with, with narrowing it down because the other is versus chickens and, and we don't have that problem. We can address that later.
Yeah, so I, I understand the, the process, um, and for, you know, declaring it, uh, dangerous. I would, I guess I would just. I guess I would just say that like. Yeah, I mean, again, I don't know. I just don't understand how a dog bites somebody and then it's possibly dangerous. You know what I mean? I get it. I get it from like a process way, but I guess just a.
But here's in dangerous target says A inflicts severe injury on a human. And then if you go down to definition, severe injury is any physical injury that results in broken bones or disfiguring lacerations requiring multiple sutures or cosmetic surgery.
Yeah, I mean, that just seems, seems like an awful high bar and awful damn late. And I wanna wait for disfigurement before something's deemed, I mean, as soon as, I mean, maybe that's just the way I was raised. But as soon as a dog bites a stranger, that dog's dangerous. So I'm just saying, like, maybe, maybe just pull the. Pull the, um. Inflicts a bite out of the potentially, because that seems like a high bar or already passed.
Well, there you go. Just take out A. So. On L, I mean, to me, it should be if a dog breaks the skin. I mean, if it's a child, I mean, if you think of it as a child, five-year-old, 10-year-old, 15-year-old. It causes psychological stuff with some kids. And if you break the skin, that means the dog's saliva is involved and the rabies is then could come into play. So instead of counting how many stitches.
I mean, last year Virgil was bit by my grandmother's lapdog and he's got scars on his face from it. Now, and it almost got his eye and it was just one bite. You know what I mean? Like, and we don't go around that dog anymore, right? Also didn't ask my grandmother to kill her lapdog either, but you know what I mean? Like it just.
I think that maybe potentially a dog could bite for different reasons that might be unclear to the owner or something like that. If the dog is injured, if the dog is sick or something like that, and they're trying to defend themselves. It, it can potentially bite somebody. And I think that that's where the potentially dangerous comes in. Because if there's something that's causing this to happen, it can be remedied. If it's not, then, you know, I, but I think that's where the potential comes in with, with a bite is that it's not always. Initially perfectly clear as to why a dog might bite something.
Yeah, I feel like the unprovoked, that any dog when unprovoked inflicts a bite to a human. A human or domestic animal. And then, uh, for disposition to attack unprovoked to cause injury, the crop injury or otherwise the friend, the safety there.
I mean, I'm fine to move on, but, uh, yeah, I mean, I would, I would like A just taken out of there. Like, and just move straight on to chases or approaches and that, that kind of stuff.
Which one? Sorry.
And where you were, and H.
Oh, H. Sorry, I heard A.
No, sorry.
Okay.
Just take A out of H.
Guys, I understand. Okay. And so it's also. I don't know. If it's in your house and you allow somebody in and your dog bites somebody in your house, it's not, it's still a problem.
I think that was the only thing I. That was the only thing I noted when I read this that stood out to me.
Yeah, tendency. D through H is a type of. If the animal, so I had kind of gotten into this in my research, uh, and. You know, I know some people do keep animals as protection animals. And so I'm curious about the private property, cause if it's on their private property. I mean, the animal is, I think in the city of Utah, animals are regarded as property. And if your property is causing harm. But the idea of private property, if it's your own versus someone else's private property, like clearly if it's on someone else's property and biting them, that's a problem. But if it's on your private property and it is your protection animal, is that a dangerous animal?
Yes. I mean, if you have, it's same if I left a loaded gun laying outside and then somebody shot themselves with it. Like, it's me, it's just like, yeah, I mean, like if you're a mailman or, you know, UPS and you come up and you get vicious by some dog that's. Trying to treat every person coming up as a, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, I, I think that what you have is a responsibility of a property owner that you don't expose people. So if you have a UPS person or you need to have beware dog, leak packages out here, don't come in the gate. But when you let somebody into your yard and the dog comes over and bites them, that's your problem if you haven't. Prevented it, it might. Because you haven't protected the person. You just opened the gates. They come on in and these kids come in and the dog fights.
I mean, and I could be wrong, but I thought, I think there's other than, unless it's like noted, I think there's a reasonable expectation that you, that people come up to your front door. That could come up to your door.
I know, but some people fence.
Oh, no, no, I know. I'm gonna say, but if it's not signed and if you can, like, you can come up and knock on someone's door as a stranger. You can come by, it's not illegal. Like, so as soon as you step foot through a gate and it's not marked, beware danger, beware dog. And a dog attacks you, like, for walking up to their door, like, and like, you know what I mean? I mean, cause it gets you.
I was in the middle of a, it was quite scary.
I mean, cause this, this.
About took me out, but it was.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, you ever gone for a walk in Albuquerque, right? It's just like a constant barrage of dogs trying to eat you alive on the sidewalk. Um, but like, because it's come up with like people shooting through their front door, right? You know what I mean? It's by knocking on your door, you shot it through the front door, that you're not protected under that. You know what I mean? As your front door isn't, is, is, is reasonable place for someone to be. Yeah. So, I don't know.
So were you wanting to change the, which?
Oh, no, I just, I'm bringing it up because it was a big part of my research when I was doing this about guard dogs or attack dogs, depending on how you. How you, no, it's like literally, they're like, they're keeping like dogs, cause it's protecting their personal property or their, and business entity or whatever. I'm not saying.
It's, it's a real thing. People, no, but somebody, somebody could and it's a legitimate thing, you know? I mean, you hear of the junkyard dog all the time and what is the junkyard's dog's purpose is to keep somebody from jumping the fence, coming onto private property and disturbing the property. That's the, that's literally the dog's purpose. And no, we don't have, you know, I mean, we don't have. I don't know. Maybe we do have a couple of cases of that. I can think of a couple of dogs in town that, you know, I mean, I think their sole purpose is to keep people out of the property.
And it could be in the future, could be. So it says proper enclosure of a dangerous dog means while on the owner's property. The dangerous dog shall be securely confined indoors or in securely enclosed and locked in a structure. Suitable to prevent the entry of young children and designed to prevent the animal from escaping.
And it wouldn't be a dangerous dog until it's been cited.
But then it goes, sorry, but then it's, um, under section zero eight zero. It's unlawful for any person to harbor any dangerous dog within town. So wait, where, where's the section that you're seeing about a dangerous dog?
Definitions.
All right. Oh, it's still under definitions.
It's I, uh, proper enclosure of a dangerous dog.
So we would wanna.
By as a dangerous dog or it already has bitten people. They've been notified that it's a dangerous dog.
But then that's gonna directly counteract what's down below that says people are not allowed to keep, you're not allowed to have dangerous dogs in town, right?
Right. And that's in where.
Contradicts it, so.
It just lost.
Don't define it if.
Don't define what a safe enclosure is if you're not even allowed to have an animal in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, or if once it's been identified, I think in the county. Stuff that said that if once you've been identified that you have a dangerous dog, you have 10 days to get rid of it. There's something, move it out of the town. There was some.
I don't remember. Oh, we probably have here. Let me pull up theirs real fast.
I saw that link on.
Here's San Juan County. I don't think it's gonna find. I'm gonna make you dizzy for a second. Sorry.
And then up above it says, while you're looking for that, it says any dangerous dog that's still in town. Will be muzzled and kept on a maximum six-foot long or shorter lease, leash or in a suitable container, crate or motor vehicle. But if it's not in its own home, then you have to muzzle them. Yeah, so we don't. So you don't need to properly, well. Yeah, you still have to have a proper enclosure of a dangerous dog. You've identified a dangerous dog. You can't just go on keeping them in your front fence. You have to comply with the restrictions of how you keep them.
So it becomes, well, so it, San Juan County's states under their six point zero four point three two zero, dangerous dogs prohibited. It shall be illegal to harbor, keep a dangerous dog within the county or to allow one to run at large within the county. Um, a dog is considered dangerous following a determination that the dog has a propensity for or a history of unprovoked physical attacks on persons or animals. Or if the animal has a propensity for or a history of unprovoked physical intimidation of persons or animals. Animal control officer issues citation and the dog must be euthanized or removed from the county within five days. If following the five-day notice period, the dangerous dog is found within the county, animal control has the authority to impound the dog. And, uh, animal control officer, animal shelter manager shall have the authority to have the dog euthanized.
And those rules have come up because of all the fights and calls and stuff for people who have done it.
They do have, um, a appeal process within those five days. But then, um, if of course the dog is found running at large, law enforcement has the authority to have the dog euthanized.
See if it's a dangerous dog and run.
And run at large, correct.
So I just wanna make a quick comment that when I sent out the shortened version of the draft. And I think the county's version went with it. It's because we don't have an enforcement process, which requires talking to the deputies and, and the county. And getting something set up. And I have not been successful at doing that. So any part of this that people want to have me pull in, that's great. But I didn't bother to clutter this one with it because we don't have all that set up for somebody picking up the animal. Being responsible for making decisions to euthanize.
So what, what about, uh. I forwarded some information from San Juan County on what they're considering for number of dogs. Uh, they, they've updated it. Before it was three. If you had three dogs, you're considered a kennel. And then where you can have a kennel. And in San Juan County, all of it is under conditional use, except in maybe agriculture. And, you know, we talked about that before, that it's a problem of being able just to have a kennel anywhere. In this small valley with the sound and whatnot, but do we? What are we gonna do about that? How many animals can you have and which zones and. Like right now, San Juan County is looking at putting four, maximum of four, which is cats and dogs. But then they decided not to do that, it looks like, and just do, uh, nuisance. We go back to the, what causes a nuisance. And if you're having a nuisance, it doesn't really matter. Cause like, we were talking about that earlier, like if you have three or four dogs, but you're not a nuisance and nobody even knows that. You're not a nuisance and nobody even knows that they're in your house or whatever, it's not really a problem, but when they're a nuisance, it becomes. A problem. So, before we incorporated, um, Jen and. Um, Carolyn Jackson and I did a road trip to Torrey and this came up because there was a woman who had five dogs. And they were trying to figure out what the limit should be. I think they may have. It may have been five dogs, but then her mom died. Her mom had five dogs, and so the lady now has ten dogs. And they had spent a lot of time trying to figure out. How to deal with this, and I think ultimately. Um, it wasn't enforceable, how many dogs. You could have.
Which goes back to the nuisance, you can enforce the nuisance, but not the numbers. Which should make sense too for the, um. This does kind of parallel with like animal care, making sure that like the animals are well cared for and not becoming a nuisance.
But that becomes a subjective thing that, that.
Right.
It's very. The nuisance you have, almost anyone counting, you had to have two property owners put in written complaints. About the animal being a nuisance. And then they had to, they, then they would talk to them, and then when it was, if it wasn't quiet in ten days or whatever, then they had to put in a written. Request again, a written complaint again. And if they both put it in again, following that time, then, then uh, more procedures would go and I don't have.
We have nuisance defined.
Don't think, I know, I shouldn't say I know anything. I believe that nuisance for other ordinance, that like we have defined nuisance in other ordinances multiple times, so we should make sure that it is. Either cross referenced or specifically related to an animal nuisance.
So, and then was it them or was it um, on the P and Z one? I think it might be on the P and Z ordinance that said, okay, some towns did ten minutes of continual barking. Means that you can complain, and then that same council took it down to five minutes. Like five minutes of continuous barking is enough to complain. Uh, so it's those kind of things that, that become a nuisance. And then there were certain, like five minutes at night was an option. Ten minutes during the day, but five minutes at night. And you know, there was, there are calls of the one. Today where you know, you can't have neighbors against neighbors. So we, we need to have something in place that they can say, hey, this is, this is the. This is our, this is our rule, but to keep peace in the community and the noise pollution and the neighborhoodness, you can bark for five minutes. And then.
Get it out of your system.
So I have dogs near me that bark a lot. And, but they don't bark continuously, only bark someone's walking by. Um, an owl's walking by, I kind of like it in the middle of the night if they bark, because that. Sometimes I wake up, sometimes I don't, but it actually warns me. I mean, one time I went out, or didn't go out, but I turned my light, house light on and off, because I was, it was a period of time when. People, there was someone in town doing mischief. So to me, the big thing is, I mean, I mean, you could have a time at night, say no bark, no. Noise thing after ten or something, but. There's a huge difference between continuous barking, which we've had in town. And, you know, just dog, and dogs barking, they bark.
And that's why the five minute thing comes in, because if it's constant for five minutes, that's kind of a really long time and like. They don't do that.
Well, these guys don't bark constantly for five minutes, because they're just barking when.
Person's gone, but, yeah, and, and I think we agree on that, one is that a nuisance is, we have to define a nuisance. So is it just one mark in the middle of the night, or is it five minutes continual, or? What, because I don't think nuisance is.
See there, you just, it was just there. Yeah, this was planning and zoning.
Yes.
Um, which, wait, I was just there, I forgot to go. Um, planning and zonings. It just had animal noises that are allowed, continuous and regularly disturb neighbors' ability to enjoy their property.
And it's marked as vague.
Circumstances vague.
And, and regularly barking is also a disturbance if. Every time you move, something barks at you, or every time you open the door, you get barked at, or whatever, um, you know, that can be a nuisance. It's, I think that describes. Regularly barking.
So, I just want to point everybody to the fact that the state of Utah has a nuisance law that can be invoked by a private citizen. That allows for enforcement through the, the code, and I. Did not put it in nuisance for that reason. There's already a, a law that uh, applies throughout the state. And if somebody thinks there's a nuisance. I was trying to hold this down to what we actually have that's problematic. At this point, and if people want to add nuisance, then I would say, let's have you read. Let me give it, the Utah code is seven, eight, be like a boy, six. Hyphen, one, one, O, one. And it talks about all these kinds of nuisances that you're talking about now. Um, but. Enforcement for these kinds of nuisances is probably not something we're going to get. The deputies on board with, with barking, maybe, definitely getting them on with dangerous dogs, but again. If, if people want to go down the path of nuisance, I'd recommend that we look at that and then we. Put this back on and, and, you know, cul it. With the idea of adding nuisance.
So what, how does the state nuisance code apply to towns? Does it not cover towns? Or if it does, why don't we just put a link in there and say this, we, we go by this state code?
I think people should, should take a look at it and read it.
But does it cover, is part of the state code saying that all municipalities in the state, all counties in the state will abide by it?
So what it says is that nuisances are classified as public or private with the law providing remedies to cease or limit. And it does require. A resident or a person who's bothered by something to bring a. A cease and desist or a cause of action or damage, but it takes the town. Out of the responsibility of trying to count number of barks, decibels, those kinds of things. But if you, if folks want to add it, then that's a really good. Summary of what a nuisance is and how you break it down.
But what about following the county ordinance, what they've set up? But if we adopt some of that. So that we kind of match, so that when they do come in, we're not completely different than the rest of the open county.
If there's, if people want to add it, go ahead and add it. I, I'm. I don't think it's necessary, but I'm only one person, so if people want to add it, let's go ahead and do it and run it by. Uh, whoever would be doing enforcement for us.
Yeah, I don't feel like it's necessary. I have a little bit of humor. Someone called me, this is like a decade ago, at ten, at. Two o'clock in the morning, because my um, barking dog is keeping them awake. And I didn't have a dog.
Did you get to tell them they were the nuisance at that point?
There was a spray outside my house. Anyway, okay.
Well, that's where, you know, if that were the case, it's if, if we have a part of this ordinance in place so that. You know, I always say it goes along with the noise and the light pollution are kind of hand in hand with keeping in with the general plan. Of what people in town look like. So if they know that that's a problem, they just call the deputies, the deputy goes, picks up the stray dog, the dog at large, and you don't have a problem, then that person didn't contact you. And they didn't stir you up and you didn't throw things across the fence or. And it just gives people a way to keep peace without getting personally involved. I can't find, I sent it to you guys, the San Juan County, it's in my mail.
Uh, the one that you sent out.
Yes, it just went out, so I think.
I couldn't open that one, it just kept sending me to a link that I didn't know what link to look for, so that was.
Oh, it's, okay, well, the first one I sent out was just a cut and paste of. Uh, of what it said. Um, it says kennels are in agricultural zones, already conditional and highway and community commercial. Um, and then the definition of kennel was discussed. Uh, currently, it's more than four dogs and or cats. The sentiment was to remove the specific animal and that relying on nuisance ordinances instead. And it looks like Kristin Bouchanelle and Melissa Riggs are at these meetings, uh, there are. Well, they're both our representatives, really, so maybe they would have some insight if they come and update us.
I actually think we're moving into a zoning issue and we've already beat kennels to death. Where, you know, we made some deliberate decisions about kennels. But I think zoning, when we start talking about the, how the county's zoning, unincorporated areas. Right now, we're talking about bluff and we've, would have to do amendments to zoning. I just feel like we're digressing into zoning.
What's the timeframe in mind to get something? Like a, I guess the next step is for something to go to Chris, like what's the timeframe and for the dogs and cats? Ordinance, regulations.
I think if people want to start talking about nuisance, that um, the folks who want nuisance need to work on it, bring it back, and then we can incorporate it. Otherwise. My thought had been when I was back, I would try to set up again, meeting with the sheriff's office to talk about enforcement. But if we're going to be adding nuisance, um, that is going to require some work.
Yeah, it's also possible, and it's happened, um. People have provoked barking dogs. I mean, I, I mean. And time, how long they're barking. Um. That's just minor note.
I mean, I'm all right moving forward without doing the nuisance yet, and returning to it if it's an issue. Um, especially if understanding incorrect, there's other things people can appeal to for nuisance outside of us.
Sounds good.
Well, yeah, I think the immediate issue right now that we're dealing with is stray dogs that are running around town and. You know, and dangerous, and dangerous dogs.
Yeah, yep.
So I'm okay moving forward without a nuisance as well.
And I still think that we need to be the overseer of, to help everybody live in peace. And have that as a part of, of what's allowed in town and what's not. So that we don't get neighbor to neighbor. People taking it into their own hands.
Are we comfortable moving forward and moving to the next line?
Yes.
Okay, then we have to stop the recorder and restart it. Is that right?
Would you just save the time and then?
It is four twenty nine, we're going to stop the recorder and start it again.
So can we get a minute?
Would you like a minute?
Don't wait, wait, let me record that, okay.
All right, um, it's four twenty nine, uh, Bluff Town Council Work Session, uh, August twelfth, twenty twenty five, everyone still in attendance, we're going to take a. Five minute break. Take a five minute break.
Perfect, okay, I'm going to go ahead and mute us, you guys will have to hear all of our. Trapezing across the auditorium floor. trapezing across the auditorium floor.